I would like to call the Tuesday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Brando, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mom Guard, Gaines, Glover, Jorski, Clue, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Legions?
Pledge of Legions to the Platinum of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted inside the front doors when you came into the room. Uh, we have no presentations tonight. Ms. Powers, administrate this report, please.
Thank you. Deputy City Engineer Alex Evans and I met with representatives from Congressman Bacon's office this morning along with representatives from Fire Engineering and NRD to bring congressional awareness of our levy project and the benefits the project will have to the community. And just a reminder, these funds would be different than the Water Sustainability Fund grant dollars that we have applied for. Uh, and we're expecting to have answers on our WSF grant at the end of November. Uh, we are holding interviews this week for the Police Department's vacant deputy police chief position. It's our intention to have a candidate selected by next week and an introduction to the City Council in the near future. So be on the lookout for that and we'll get you introduced to whoever is selected. And then just a couple of quick reminders of upcoming dates. Uh, just a reminder that the fall cleanup day started yesterday and ends on Sunday and, and that's from seven AM to five PM each day. Uh, the final event for the Papillion one fifty celebration is this Friday and Saturday, the twenty-second, twenty-third. And then save the date for the Scout Cabin Restoration Dedication next Monday, October twenty-fifth at six PM. And the city is thankful for its partnership with the Boy Scouts on restoring this historic and iconic cabin. Uh, and it's housed in the heart of the city and we are hopeful it can last for many generations to come. And then finally, the Recreation Department is holding their annual Fall Festival and Halloween Safe Night. And that's next Thursday, October twenty-eighth at Papillion La Vista South High School. And there'll be several family-friendly events and a costume contest. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilwoman Clue, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mom Guard, Glover, Clue, Ingberg, six days, zero days.
Motion passes. Next is item D one, Ordinance nineteen forty-six. An ordinance to annex certain real estate to the city of Papillion, Nebraska and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. D two, Ordinance nineteen forty-seven, an ordinance to change the official zoning map of the city of Papillion in accordance with section two oh five thirty-two of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to adopt a zoning map and to apply existing or future zoning regulations, property use regulations, building ordinances, electrical ordinances, plumbing ordinances, and all other regulatory ordinances of the city of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute sixteen nine oh one and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilman Glover. D three, Ordinance nineteen forty-eight, an ordinance to detach certain real estate from the corporate limits of the city of Papillion and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. D four, Ordinance nineteen forty-nine, an ordinance to change the official zoning map of the city of Papillion in accordance with section two oh five thirty-two of the Papillion Municipal Code to adopt the zoning map and to apply existing or future zoning regulations, property use regulations, building ordinances, electrical ordinances, plumbing ordinances, and all other regulatory ordinances of the city of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute sixteen nine oh one and provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilwoman Clue. Item D five, Ordinance nineteen fifty-four, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to MU Mixed Use for the property legally described as a plating of part of Tax Lot Five. A tax lot located in the east half of the northeast quarter of section thirty-four, also together with part of the west half of said northeast quarter of section thirty-four, all located in Township fourteen north, range twelve east of the six PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of South Washington Street and Highway three seventy. The applicant is eighty-four three seventy Main Street LLC, Highway three seventy Mixed Use Development. This is for first reading for an introduction, but before that, Councilman Sunday, did you have something?
I just wanted to announce to everyone that I'm going to be recusing myself from voting on this or any related issues or debating the same.
Thank you. And, uh, just for council, uh, we used to have an ordinance where, um, for somebody to recuse themselves, we actually had to have a motion and a vote, but we act, the, there was, the council actually changed those rules. So now it's, uh, the individual just recusing themselves. Thank you very much. Is there a council member that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. D six, Ordinance nineteen fifty-five, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R four PUD two multifamily residential with a planned unit development overlay for the property legally described as attractive land being part of the southeast quarter, section thirty-one Township fourteen north, range twelve east of the six PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of South one hundred and twentieth street and Shram Road, applicant's Ashbury Hills Development LLC. Is there a council member that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilman Glover. Lot of introductions tonight. D seven, Ordinance nineteen fifty-six, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. Is there a council member that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilwoman Clue. That's all the items for first reading. On to second reading. Item E one, Ordinance nineteen fifty-two, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to LI Limited Industrial for the property legally described as attractive land located in the southeast quarter of section twenty-five Township fourteen north, range eleven east of the six PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of South one hundred and thirty-second street and Highway three seventy. The applicant's MP Dodge Black Elk Industrial. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Anybody want to speak in favor? Are there any opponents? And I'll note for the record, we did get a couple of emails and those, uh, in opposition and those will be noted, I mean, one, and that'll be noted in the, uh, record and the council does have a copy of that. Anybody neutral? I'll close the public hearing. Item E two, Ordinance nineteen fifty-three, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R four multifamily residential and R four PUD two multifamily residential with a specific planned unit development overlay for the property legally described as attractive land being part of Tax Lot Four. A tax lot located in the northwest corner of section five Township thirteen north, range twelve east of the six PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner of South one hundred and fourteenth street and Shram Road. The applicant's Felker Family Farms Belterra Phase Three. I'll open the public hearing. Any proponents? Welcome. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Kyle Hazy with the NA Consulting Group representing the applicant, one oh nine oh nine Mill Valley Road, Omaha, Nebraska. Uh, as mentioned, the property is, uh, located generally in the southwest corner of one hundred and fourteen Shram. Um, you can see there was phase one and phase two of this project that have, uh, currently been platted. Uh, we were completing the, the master plan of this, uh, residential, um, development with phase three, which, uh, generally consumes the southern half and a little bit of the western half of the property. We can go to exhibit two. As you can see on this exhibit, um, the, the property in whole is about eighty-five point five acres and is currently zoned ag. Uh, we were looking to rezone this property into two different zonings, uh, one R four and one R four, uh, with PUD. Uh, the gray colored lots on the west side, um, are the R four single-family lots. There is one hundred and twenty-eight of those lots, uh, generally their size is about a hundred, or about seventy-seven by one hundred and thirty foot deep. Uh, the tan color lots down on the east side, uh, those are lots that we are looking to zone R four, um, with PUD. Um, those, um, are, is a neighborhood that is targeting, uh, fifty-five and over age group. If you want to go to the next exhibit. That's a little more detail on here. Uh, there's, um, ninety-seven units, uh, the, the development as a whole will be HOA maintained. Um, as mentioned, um, it is targeting the fifty-five plus age groups. They have some courtyards on the side of the house. Um, they have, uh, as part of the development, they have a clubhouse up in the northwest corner, uh, which has thirty-five hundred square foot clubhouse with a pool. And then there's, um, some parking and pickleball courts also available for the residents. Um, we have read through the staff, uh, report and will work with staff to meet the requirements to move forward, uh, to the final plat. Um, with that, I'll make myself bill for any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Next is item F one, Resolution R twenty-one zero nine two, a resolution to prove the proposed scope of services and proposal for topog- topographic survey for North Beetle, North Osage, and East Third Street Extensions from Thompson, Greason, and Dorner. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-one zero nine two? Motion by Councilman Mumguard, second by Councilman Sunday. Do we have any proponents? Anybody want to speak in favor? Any opponents? Yes. And as you're coming up, I'll just make note, we did receive several emails, uh, and as opponents, and those are in the record and the council has a, has a copy of every one of those. Welcome. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Bill Smith. I live at one twenty-one North Beetle Street in Papillion. You guys have all seen me before. And I talked about this same topic on two previous occasions. Once was a couple of years ago when it was focused more on Beetle Street. And the, the other time was in August when it was this resolution or the predecessor to this resolution of getting it onto the one to six-year plan. So, you know my position. What I want to talk about now, I've been, I'd like to spend a couple of minutes talking about the traffic patterns in Papillion. And as we all know, there's pretty well three north to south traffic corridors. Seventy-second, Eighty-fourth, Ninety-sixth Street. And during rush hour times, all of the traffic north and south is going through there. So, you know, it's, it's only going to get worse with time. We can all remember twenty years ago when there was no development in the south side of Papillion, no traffic coming that way. Now we have rush hours. We have Eighty-fourth Street, which is a nightmare. Seventy-second Street gets a nightmare. I used to drive down Seventy-second to work all the time. All these subdivisions, which I noticed we had some more that were getting approved now, they're, they're just causing that to get worse and worse. So as, as part of the, uh, proposal from TD two, which I have here, and on page two of that is a letter to Jeff Thompson where they outline the proposed scope of services. And one, one of the items, the line items, it's about halfway down the page. It says, prepare traffic flow evaluations of the three street extensions. So now I, I have questions about that. And when, when they say of the three street extensions, are they looking at the traffic only on those streets? In which I, the case I think that's an incomplete study. I think they also need to look at the total traffic on Eighty-fourth concurrently. Because if you tell me there's two hundred cars that exit this neighborhood a day, what does that mean to me? Nothing. If you tell me there's two hundred cars that exit the neighborhood and there's three thousand cars going up and down Eighty-fourth Street at the same time period, well, that has some meaning. It shows me that it's a very fractional number that are actually coming out of the neighborhood. So I think as, as we look at that, I think that needs to be taken in that context. And maybe, um, maybe the city already has that number for Eighty-fourth Street that, that would be reasonable enough to use. I don't know. Ideally, I think it should be concurrent. So it's kind of the, the order of magnitude there. The next item, uh, is the next item on the letter to Jeff Thompson from TD two. Attend a maximum of three public meetings to review project with stakeholders. So again, a couple of questions. Are we the residents, the stakeholders? And will we receive mailed invitations not only to the ones that are on Beetle, Osage, and Third Street, but I believe that should go to all residents of that neighborhood, of the old town Papillion. If this, if these extensions are put through, boy, is it that bad? If they are put through, then the traffic increase is going to affect everybody in the neighborhood, not just the people on those streets. And I, I don't, I don't think there can be any denying to that because people may come in on Third, but they're going to wind up to the north and go up Grand View to get out. It's going to hit everybody. So, and then on those meetings, I've never been to one. I don't know what to expect. So the, the question I have, it, and I asked Steve this earlier, we were talking, is it a presentational meeting? Where they just present the information and we are expected to just absorb it? Or, or are they going to have, give us the opportunity to express our opinions and take record of that? Because I think obviously we've shown the last two meetings that there is some public interest in this. And, you know, we, we want our voices heard on this. I think it's important. So on, on, on that note also, I, I would say that I, I think all city council members should go to at least one of those meetings. Whether or not it's, it's your ward or not, because you have the right and you will vote on these issues. So it would seem to me that it would be incumbent to hear what the people have to say. And that's more than just Bill. That's other people that are going to be there. I believe there's some out in the audience here too. So that's, you know, I, I wouldn't want to feel that it was just a rubber stamp. I would want to feel that the other council members had done their homework on it as well. So, I think the final thing I'd like to say, and this again goes to all council members. Now remember, I live on Beetle Street. So what I'm going to ask is if you would take ten minutes and drive up Third Street to where it crosses Osage and park there. Park there for ten minutes. And what you're going to notice is it's a really nice neighborhood. The houses are sort of modest. Most of them are really sharp. Their yards are sharp. The landscaping is good. The people want to be there. They're there because they want to be there. And then the second thing you're going to notice is that yes, it's really quiet. You don't hear First Street. You don't hear Sixth Street. You don't hear three seventy. There's very little traffic. That's what we're asking to maintain. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mumguard.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, Mr. Smith brought up the point that I had made some notes here.
Can you turn your mic on again?
I did. You turned me on? It's happened before. He, he brought up the, uh, requirement that there's a traffic flow evaluations. And it says that there's going to be evaluations for just the three street extensions. I'm going to partially agree with him, but that's not enough. Uh, I, I don't know that we need to go to Eighty-fourth Street and look at Seventy-second, look at those. But as I evaluate the situation, if we extend these streets, I think inevitably there will be more traffic on those streets. But I also think inevitably there will be less traffic on some of the other streets that are used to enter and exit this neighborhood. Because for every car that now will enter the neighborhood on Beetle Street, that, or exit on Beetle Street, that's a car that is not going west on Third Street or someplace else to reach a north-south street. So I would ask that this traffic, this, this scope of services be changed so that there's a traffic flow evaluation for not just the three extensions, but for all of the streets in that neighborhood, or at least the major streets in that neighborhood. What would be necessary to do?
I'm going to look to Mr. Thielen because I think what you, if you're looking to change a scope of service, well, I'd have two questions. One might be to Mr. Evans, um, the Deputy City Engineer, uh, is that the current scope? Kind of what is the scope of the traffic study and is it accomplishing that? And if it is, your question might be answered. Both of your questions might be answered. If it isn't, then I think the question's going to be if we're, if the vote tonight is to award a contract and the council is wanting to change the scope of service, basically amend it, does that mean we can't really amend their scope of service? So would we table it to go back to revisit it? Or would we take a vote and turn it down and then they rebid it? How would that work, Mr. Thielen?
There are a couple of ways we could go about it. We could amend it here today, um, but then that would require us to go back to, uh, TD squared and, uh, see what that would do to their bid, see if that would change their, their compensation that they'd be expected. The other way to do it would be to, uh, approve this as is and, uh, that could always be handled with a change order of some type.
I'd go along with that second version. I'm not going to deal with this today.
And that change order would still come before council because may, the whole council may or may not agree with the change order. Mr. Evans, can you talk a little bit about, uh, the scope of a traffic study based on what you heard from the two gentlemen?
Yes, Alex Evans, Deputy City Engineer. The intent of that scope item is a full engineering, uh, traffic engineering study for the neighborhood and the arterial streets about it. So it will be a full, um, traffic impact study for the neighborhood. And typically TD two does subcontract that out with usually a con- uh, a contracted engineer that we've worked with in the past. So they're familiar with the, the requirements that we typically have for traffic impact study and that is the intent of that scope item.
That answer your question, Mr. Mumguard.
Okay, so I, I guess I look at this, unless these extensions somehow increase enough of the amount of traffic in, in and through the neighborhood, every car that now goes down Beetle to get to First Street is a car that's not going down Third Street to get into Washington. And I just want the numbers to show if that's correct.
Yes, that, that will be, uh, an item will evaluate, you know, service delivery vehicles, just, uh, traffic in and out of the neighborhood. That'll be evaluated because yes, it will reduce, you know, instead of having to go down Third Street or Fourth Street to get to the arterials, there'll be, uh, other avenues that'll reduce the traffic on there. So that'll be part of what we would like to look at.
Okay, well, thank you. And I thank Mr. Smith for bringing that up.
Okay, well, I, so when you say arterial, does that mean? Mr. Sunday.
Thank you. Um, I just want to add to what Mr. Mumguard said. I, I think that includes Sixth Street, does it not? Because I know a lot of residents that live in your neighborhood, if they're, if they're going north, they're going to probably drive up to Sixth Street first and then hook up with either Seventy-second or Eighty-fourth. Or if they're going west or south, they're going to go straight to Eighty-fourth Street and pull on there. Is that right?
Yes, yeah. We, we look at First Street, Sixth Street, and Art, uh, Eighty-fourth Street as the arterial connections.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Oh, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Back to what Mr. Mumguard said. I can't disagree that there will be more traffic, more, a better ability to get out of the neighborhood. But what I question is in the percentage of that amount of traffic to what's already on Eighty-fourth Street, is that truly significant? And I'll go back up to the slides. We saw the new development down south. How many new cars is that going to put on Eighty-fourth Street? There's already developments down there in, on the south side of Papillion that are, are coming weekly, weekly, it seems, that are putting more and more burden on these streets. And is our neighborhood, however, whatever that percentage is of the total load, is that significant enough to change the, the complexion of this old neighborhood we live in?
And I, and I tend to agree with you that that's, uh, something that we will ultimately have to factor in. But if we don't approve this tonight, we will never know.
I, I agree. I agree with that. Yeah.
Any other opponents? Welcome. And if you'd state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Paula Adams and I live at one twenty-one North Beetle Street. I want to put in my input as to the extensions on the streets. I believe in a representative government. I believe that what we're doing here is truly important and that we should listen to what the people have to say. I also know that we shouldn't do things just because of a status quo. So, one of the things I've tried to do is go out into the neighborhood and see if my opinion, and I'm a cor- of course against it, is the, am I the only person that's against it? I wanted to know, is this true? So I knocked on doors. And I would say, when I knocked on doors and I talk to people, let's say we have ten people, eight or nine of those people will be against it and two people will be for it. So that's what I'm hearing and that's why I'm here, because not everybody can be here. And I believe that we should have a say in the government that we have. So I'm glad that you're listening to us. Um, one of the other things that came up, I had heard that this had been in the twenty-year plan or twenty years ago. I don't believe we should just do things because it's the status quo or that's the way we planned it twenty years ago. Maybe the way Papillion has laid out has changed twenty, from twenty years ago. Maybe the neighborhood has grown into something that was different than originally planned. We should be looking at that. I invite all of you to come to our neighborhood and check out the spots where your plan has proposed to put the streets through so that you can see what the people are talking about when they say, well, I want to make it so that my kid can still go out and play and I don't have to look over my shoulder and see that there's a lot of traffic or have to worry about things like that. I've talked to people who said, yes, this is why we moved to this particular neighborhood because it's quiet and we'd like to keep it that way. And, oh, by the way, if we have more access to the neighborhood and people can get in and out quicker, then doesn't crime grow up because we have more access? Now do I have to worry a little bit more about my safety? Um, Paula, have they thought about this? And I said, I don't know. I'm going to talk to the people who represent me and, and ask some of these questions and find out what the process is, what the flow is. How do we determine what needs to be done when we change the layout of the city? So that's one of the things I'd like to hear from our municipal representatives here is what is this process? And where do the final decisions happen? I don't want this to be carried forward just because twenty years ago we decided this is the way it's going to be laid out. I believe that we need to think about it and say, is this a smart way to lay it out now? Is this what the people want? Is this better for Papillion? Now, my position, of course, is that it's not better for me and it's not better for the people around me. But I think we as taxpayers and voters need to understand the process. And I'd like that from our city government.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? Welcome.
Mayor, Council. Uh, I'm not going to spend as much time as did last time in terms of my stance and so forth. My name is Larry Churney. I live on three oh one North Osage Street. I'm basically talking about the Third Street Corridor. I want to reiterate the safety issue if we put more cars on Third Street. And I'd like to invite, I'm going to share, you know, what the other two had also said. Please come to our neighborhood. And I'm, you know, whether it's our council, you know, or two, uh, invite all of you to come over. Come on to my house and so forth. And I really want to point out the safety issue that we have. And I'd really like to have you take that in consideration. I understand the vote is just for a, um, well, it's scope creep, it looks like for project, but we originally went from a hundred and ten thousand, I think that was an estimated. And now we're just under, I think, a hundred and twenty now. But invite you to the neighborhood, look at what we're talking about and to, please take that in consideration. Thank you.
Any other opponents? Welcome.
See, Councilman, um, my name is Greg Penning. I reside at four thirty-one East Second Street. And you've already heard all the reasons why we're opposed to this. And it's just, it seems kind of silly to do something that a lot of the people that live in the neighborhood don't want done anyway. And so from what I understand, the conversation between Mr. Smith and Mr. Mumguard was, were, were they talking about inner city or inner neighborhood, trying to get out of the neighborhood? Because I don't have a problem. I've lived in the neighborhood for thirty years and I don't have a problem getting out of the neighborhood. Now, what I do have a problem with is when you have people thinking that you can get from Sixth Street down to First Street and they come zooming through our neighborhood. Street down to First Street and they come zooming through our neighborhood. And that does curve. That's what I have a problem with. Anyway, I am opposed. I think it's kind of silly to spend money on something that the residents don't want. So there's, as far as, like for me, I'm just like, why would you do something I don't want? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? I'll close. Well, it's not a public hearing. Any council discussion? Mr. Ingberg.
I'll go first. So all the rest of the council people could argue against me. You know, there's a part of me that would love to have a traffic study so I could see what it actually would show. But on the other hand, I'm not here to represent whether I think it's a great idea, poor idea. I'm here to represent the people that live there. Now, I'm new to these folks. Well, I know most of the people, but I'm new representing this, this area. And I think their voices have been heard. Now, I realize that Mr. Mungard and Mr. Sunday make a valid point that this is a study open. It doesn't mean it's ever going to happen or it's going to be built. But there's a part of me that says, you know, the public doesn't want it changed. And I have a hard time voting to spend $119,000 when people tell me that live there, that it's going to affect their lives in a negative way and they don't see a need for it. Unfortunately, I don't have numbers to back you guys up necessarily. I could go sit in your neighborhood, but quite honestly, in the 40, 40 years under the police, but you're something, I've been through your neighborhoods a lot of times. Trust me. Now, granted, it changes over time. It's different now than it was in 1991, let's say. But I have a, a pretty good idea of the nature of where you live. I spent enough time there, believe me. But at this point in time, I don't know what my colleague, Mr. Gaines, how he would, what he thinks about this subject. And I know some of these intersections we're talking about, not all are in, in my ward, Ward Two. You know, those intersections are in Ward Four and so forth. So I'm not representing all three of these intersections. But as, as far as I'm concerned, until I see, I don't see a real compelling need to spend money on a study. Now, maybe the study will say, oh, this would be great. It won't really hurt anything. But until I hear from other people that live in that area, they say, hey, we want this put there because we think it'll really improve the quality of our life, I'm not going to support this. It's just that simple. You know, if people want to indicate to me that it'd be a good thing to do and will benefit their neighborhood, will benefit them, then I'll change my mind. But as of tonight, I can't support it. And I know other people around this table are going to say, well, it's just a study. How can you say no when you don't know what the facts are? Well, you know, sometimes the facts are what's in here. Sometimes the facts are the people that live there every day. You know, I, I don't live in your neighborhood. You don't live in mine. And so it'd be hard being described to you, my neighborhood, just like it would be to really give me a feel for years. But you know it. You know your neighborhood. If I could see a compelling need that would really help the community traffic flow, not just your neighborhood, but the community as a whole, if I, if somebody could prove to me that that has an impact, positive on the community's traffic flow, that'd be another thing as well. But I haven't seen that. I really haven't seen a reason other than access to do it. And I'm going to assume, as vocal as all of you are, that if you had a problem with access, I would have heard about it by now. You know, since I have it, I'm going to make the assumption that you don't need additional access to improve your life day to day. If that's not true, then somebody better tell me because I don't hear from anybody that says that. So I'm going to not support it at this particular time. If other council people do, they certainly, I understand why they want some facts and they want a traffic study that will determine some facts. I don't have any heartburn over that. I mean, they have a right to vote the way they think is best for their community. But in my case, I represent you, not me. So I'm going to not support it.
Mr. Sunday.
Thank you, Mayor. I did live in that neighborhood for a time in my past. I, I, when I was a student, I rented a home on East Second Street and I'm very familiar with the layout there and the difficulties in and out of there. And you're right, it is very peaceful there and it's a very desirable place to live, other than maybe the inconvenience of getting in and out. But those aren't the reasons I'd like to learn more about this. I'm concerned and I know other council persons are concerned with the traffic flows, especially along Eighty Fourth Street, where we've got cars coming out in the morning, especially, you know, coming on to Eighty Fourth Street from Third, Fourth, whichever street they choose to hook up with Eighty Fourth Street. But that's causing clusters along, along the way, I think. And I'd like to study to just see how bad that really is and whether this is worth it. I don't know. I haven't made a firm decision, one, one way or the other is how my ultimate vote goes on this. But I would like, because I represent, you know, not just people in Ward Two, but everybody, Ward Three, excuse me, but everybody in the city of Papillion. And, and that includes Ward Two, but it also includes Wards One, Three and Four. And I, and I want to make the decision that's informed and what's best for our community. And so for that reason, I'm going to vote for, for this tonight, which is not to tip off what my final vote will be because I, I really don't know. Thank you.
Mr. Mungard.
First off, I want to publicly say that I agree with Councilman Sunday. He makes, he makes several good points. I, I, in doing this job, I try to follow the philosophy that good decisions rest on good information. And without good information, then you're less likely to make good, good decisions. Now, certainly, public input is important, but it's only one kind of information. And this study will add to that and give us additional information. For that reason, I want to make the best decision in the end that I can. So I'm going to vote to obtain as much of the information that we can. And this is the way to do it.
Councilwoman Glue.
Thank you. First off, I'll just tell you, in the last four days, I've been in your neighborhood twice. So I have been out there. I think you might be surprised how many of the rest of the council members have been through your neighborhood. I, I'm actually going to support this because I want to know the facts. I know a lot of times we get very impassioned about where we live, what we think is going on. I will tell you, I was very upset to see trees going down in my neighborhood, you know, but it wasn't just about one person's opinion. It was about the facts of what were going on. And that's why I think this study's going to be important, is to actually give us the facts and the data that will tell us, how is it going to affect some of our, our traffic patterns? And is it going to affect it enough to actually justify the cost? I hope that part of it also lets us know, will it increase public safety at all? Will it increase the ability for an ambulance to get to your home? So I am going to be voting to see if we can get more firm data that helps us figure out the right course of action.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Glover.
Well, being I'm the last one, I'm going to weigh in also. I'm, I'm going to support the proposal for the very reasons that have been mentioned. I think there's nothing wrong with gathering information that help us make that decision, whether we need to do this or not. I, if I had to vote for not vote tonight, I probably wouldn't, I would vote no. Because I, I'm not sure, as I look at it, and I too have been around this neighborhood three times in the last couple of months, looking at the different issues that have been brought up. And the, the, the thing that bothers me about it is, is that as our city grows, if we, if we don't do something, you know, we may have some bigger issues down the line. But I don't think we're, we will know that until we, until we do this study. And, and I get it that it seems like an awful lot of money when nobody wants us to do it. You know, I, I get that. But at the same time, the information that's gathered can last, we can use that information for the next 10 years as to what we might need to do if we need to make change. So I will, I will be voting for it, but that doesn't mean that I will support it after we get the information and, and figure out the traffic patterns and what, what it will do for us or won't do for us in the future.
Any other council discussion? Again, we've got a scout in the audience, so I always like to give a little bit of education. What's being voted on tonight is a study on if some roads should be changed. And if it is passed, it is a study that's done. It is not authorizing any work to be done. If the result of the study says to do the work, then that's a totally separate action and that money's not even budgeted in this year. So if the project would say do it, and then if the council would say move forward, then a year from now, when we go through the budget, they'd have to find the money, put it in there and then approve a whole another series of contracts. The other thing for the scout, state law is to have, there's eight city council members to have a quorum. That means there has to be five of us here to have a meeting and a vote. And for something to pass, it has to be a majority of the entire council, not just the majority of those that are here. So we have eight city council members, so it takes five city council members to, to vote and pass something. If we end up with four city council members, then it's a tie vote and then I can, I have the right to cast a vote. And that's the only, then that's about the only time I vote unless I do a veto. So a lot of times when we get into situations, whether it's with a developer, a controversial item or something like that, if we only have five people, which is unusual, a lot of times we'll give an opportunity for the person that brings it forward to see if they want the item tabled, knowing kind of the situation they're in and could table it to the next meeting when more people are here and they know where everybody stands. The other thing that can happen is if an item fails because of this type of situation, the people that were not here do have a right to ask for it to be reconsidered at the next meeting. So it could be voted on again. So kind of a weird situation we're in. But it's unusual that we only have five people. So a little bit of education for the public, but mainly for the scout because I'm assuming you're here for citizenship in the community and understanding how things work is one of the requirements. And so you're seeing a unique meeting tonight. Ms. Glue.
I would like to make a motion to table this to the next council meeting.
We have a motion to table. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Sunday. Any council discussion on a motion to table? Please vote.
Sunday. Mungard. Glover. Clue. Ingberg. Four yays, one nay by Councilman Ingberg.
So the motion to table fails, so we're back to the original motion. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mungard. Glover. Clue. Ingberg. Four yays, one nay by Councilman Ingberg.
So the motion fails for the public. The council members that were not here do have a right to ask for a motion to reconsider and then that's a vote that's taken. And then if they do that, then that does bring the item back again. So you want to kind of monitor the agenda and what we're doing. And so that's that item. Item F2, Resolution R210194, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land being part of tax lot four, a tax lot located in part of the northwest quarter of Section Five Township 13 North, range 12 East of the 6 p.m. Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner of South 114th Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Spelker Family Farms, Belterra Phase Two. It's a public hearing. Proponents? Welcome again.
I'm Alex with TNA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Omaha, Nebraska, representing the applicant. I just described the project earlier in the evening as it was part of the second reading and public hearings. With that, I'll make myself bill for any questions that I can.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210194? Motion by Councilman Mungard? Second by Councilman Glover. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mungard. Glover. Clue. Ingberg. Five yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F3, Resolution R21095, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the southeast quarter, Section 25 Township 14 North, range 11 East of the 6 p.m. Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of South 132nd Street and Highway 370. The applicant is NP Dodge Black Oak Industrial. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents? Welcome.
I'm Mr. Mayor, here with the council. Eric Williams with Olson, 2111 North 67th Street, Omaha. I'm here representing the applicant. The project, the project consists of approximately 27 acres on the northwest corner of 132nd and 370. We're proposing to split the land into two lots with one outlaw. Proposed use will be for future, or proposed industrial warehouse facility on Lot One and Lot Two will just be future for future use. Here available answering any questions.
Mr. Sunday.
Could you speak to Steph Hoffman who sent us all an email concerned about the wetlands at that location? How will your project affect the wetlands?
We did a wetland study for the project. There's no wetlands on the site. We have, there is the channel that's on the north side of the project and we have to maintain a three to one plus 50 setback from that. Plus, there's an existing sanitary sewer easement on that side. So we're actually setting back further away from that as well. So we're staying completely away from this existing sanitary sewer easement and away from the channel that's on that side.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? And it will note for the record, we did get one email and that was the one Mr. Sunday referenced. All the council has it and it will be entered into the record as well. I'll close the public hearing. Do a motion to approve Resolution R210195? Motion by Councilman Sunday? Second by Councilman Mungard. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mungard. Glover. Clue. Ingberg. Five yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F4, Resolution R210197, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a Class I liquor license for SKPN LLC doing business as Sushi Karma, 248 Olson Drive Suite 101, Papillion, Nebraska, and a manager application for Teresa Helany. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Is the applicant here? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R210197? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion? Mr. Sunday.
What a Class I liquor license entails.
What is, Ms. Brown, but Mr. Thielen?
It's been a while since I've looked at those, but I think Class I is carryout and not consume on the, on the premises.
I'm going to look to Mr. Mungard too to.
I'm just going to go on record. I'm not going to support somebody to get a liquor license when I've not even. Had a chance to question them or see who they are or know anything about them.
Yeah.
So for that reason, I'm going to need to know tonight.
The I, and I understand that, and then to answer it, the I is to allow the sale of beer, wine and distilled spirits on sale only. Any other discussion? And again, just because of the situation we're in with five, I'm going to. I'm going to remind it every time we get into it. If there is somebody that we already know is probably going to vote no, we know then that there's a likelihood that item will fail because it does not have a majority. It could be recalled by somebody at the next meeting or somebody here does have a right to table it. So I guess I'll call to see if there is a motion to table. And if not, do you want to do that? Okay, we have a motion to table. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Mumgarth. Any discussion? And I'm assuming that that's date specific to the next council meeting? Okay. Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Glover. Klue. Ingberg. Five yays, zero nays.
Motion to table to the next council meeting passes. Next is item F5, Resolution R210198, public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve a Class C liquor license for Tyetta LLC, doing business as Moshe Chingon, 7902 Town Center Parkway in Papillion. The manager for Jose Deoncio. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Are there any proponents? And if you would fix all of the names I mispronounced. And one of the things, since you are here, feel free to take a little bit of time and give a little bit of a commercial too of what it is and the concept and feel free to market it a little bit.
My name's Alex Mull. Address is 4549 Seward Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Here today for your consideration for the Class C liquor license for Moshe Chingon. It is a taqueria. There's already a location on 6207 Maple Street. This will be our second location. Yeah, it is a, a taqueria style, Latin collaboration, Peruvian, Mexican, all sorts of different types of stuff. This will be similar to that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other proponents or any opponents? Yes, Mr. Sunday or Mr. Mumgarth?
I, I just want, I just want to clarify, this is in Shadow Lake.
This one will be in Shadow Lake. Yeah, the address here. This is going to be our second location.
So I'm going to thank you very much because we've had real concerns about all the businesses that have had to move out of Shadow Lake. So it is great to see another one new and kind of.
Absolutely.
And I think it's important to note, it's actually probably the sixth one that has opened in Shadow Lake. And I think three or four food concepts during COVID. So they're doing a great job there. Mr. Sunday.
You have liquor license in Benson then as well? How's, how's that gone?
It's going well. It's a Class C as well. So no problems there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Mayor didn't call motion.
Well, he didn't. Well, I just closed the public hearing. Last question, when are you planning to open?
I don't have a date as of yet. I know it's under construction right now.
Perfect. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R210198? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Klue. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Glover. Klue. Ingberg. Five yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Welcome and thank you very much for doing it. Item F6, Resolution R210200, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a special use permit to allow body art services as a permitted use on the property legally described as Tax Lot A1B1A, A1B1C, and A1B1D. Section 231412, generally located at 815 Terra Plaza. The applicant is Jara Simmons, Jennifer Simmons, Simmons Body Art Services. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents? Welcome. And if you'd state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jennifer. Sorry. My name is Jennifer Simmons. My address is 7220 South Anniversary Street, La Vista. I do have my business plan, if you wouldn't mind me passing it out. Okay, I'm a little nervous, so excuse me. I, I've been in the tattoo industry for about 13 years. I, I've grown up in Papillion, aside from when I lived in Colorado for a few years. I've lived in the Papillion area. My parents have been here for over 30 years. And so with the exponential growth that the tattoo industry is experiencing at the moment, even with the, the shutdown, the pandemic shutdown last year, we're still expecting a 23% increase this year and next. So I would like to bring a art gallery, community culture, and also do, you know, art gallery, or art events, art show events every first Friday to involve other local artisans and just create a disarming art gallery, tattoo shop. And so if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sunday.
Do you know why a special use permit is necessary for your business?
I, what I understand is just the past experiences from unprofessionalism with, within the tattoo shops that have been in Papillion in the past. And I can respect the standards that have been set and that are a higher standard for Papillion, so.
So at some point did a council, a past council pass an ordinance prohibiting tattoo parlors?
No, I may look to Mr. Gibbons in case you know, but I'm probably going back in history. So you may not know either. I know the only specific change the council made for services like this was in the downtown overlay district. And the logic there, and when I say downtown, it's probably Lincoln to Sixth Street, one block either way. And the logic down, and what was passed down there was not a prohibition to any type of services, but any type of business that is age restricted, which would be liquor, tattoo, because you've got to be a certain age, any type of service that is age restricted by the state. We put a special use permit in downtown because the concern was we're trying to make downtown a viable district for everybody. And if we had three or four businesses in a row that were all age restricted, you just prevented kids from being downtown. And so it was more to prevent that type of situation as opposed to the type of service. But overall in the city, I'm not sure. Mr. Gibbons, are you aware? I'm assuming it's been that way for a long time.
Yeah, Travis Gibbons, Assistant Planning Director. From my understanding, this happened before my time as well. And from what Mr. Stursmann's told me before, is it, it was how you described it. And then again, the way it ended up, the ordinance change happened is that it did carry over to a use definition, which body art services required. Because it was age restricted, it still is allowed in outside of the downtown overlay district. So this is why it's thus requires a special use permit anywhere in the, in the community commercial or general commercial zoning district.
So it's more of an unintended consequence?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That answer your question, Mr. Sunday?
It does. Thank you.
Okay, any other council discussion? Please vote. I did it again. I'm getting ahead of myself every time. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R210200? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilwoman Klue. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Glover. Klue. Ingberg. Five yays, zero nays.
Motion passes and welcome. Thank you. I like the idea of the art gallery and bringing that to Terra and helping revitalize that area as well. So thank you very much. Welcome to Papillion. Item F7, Resolution R210201, a resolution to approve a public property lease with William J. Bima Jr. and Rosa Von F. Bima for the right of way on Lariat Circle, east of Chisholm Trail. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210201? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Anybody want to speak? Welcome, sir. Good to see you. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Bill Bima. I live at 809 Chisholm Trail in Papillion here. It's Overland Hill Edition, Lot Number 72. Go ahead, have a slide, please. You don't have a slide? I submitted one. This is going to be a little difficult. Okay. My property is adjacent to the cul-de-sac where I live. My backyard is open to the cul-de-sac. My problem, I need to put in a fence. I want to fence my backyard. I have a row of trees on my property line, which is the 12 and a half feet from the curb for our setback. I need to try to get that up to 10 feet so I have room to put in posts because of the roots of the trees. The trees in diameter go from, the largest one is 36 inch, smallest one is about 18 inches. So to do that, I need to get 10 feet. Now, this is probably something new. I approached the city planning to see if there was any lease that could be done or leave. I was told no, but I had to see the city engineer. I approached that, talked to the secretary, what I wanted to do. They said, well, there's no way that can be done. And said, but we'll talk about it and call you back. They did. I came up with the idea of doing a lease for that amount of property. It's quite small. If you, when you talk of leasing land, it's normally by acres. This would be, if it is there, would be 35,000th of an acre. In other words, .0035 of one acre. The contract that the city engineer and city attorney worked up for this, I don't know. Do you have a copy of that there?
It's in the act.
It's in, okay. I was wondering why it wasn't. I have signed that contract and I'm just waiting for approval to lease that amount of land. Any questions?
Thank you. Any, any questions for Mr. Bima? Mr. Glover.
What was the amount of the lease?
Excuse me? The amount? $285 per year for one year and redoable every year.
Mr. Mumgarth?
As I understand this, the trees are currently on the property line.
The trees are on the property line.
And you just want to put the fence outside of the trees so they would be on your property?
They would not be on my property. That's a property I want to lease.
Yeah. They'll be on the property line. You would just be able to use the two feet that are in, outside of the trees.
Yes.
And all that does is it moves, it moves the public right of way from 12 and a half to 10 feet.
That's correct. The reason for that, the tree roots, I got to get away from that to do it. On the other side to move it down. It's on the rise. That's, okay, the level line from the cul-de-sac to there. My, my, the land, my, my backyard is four feet below that. So there is a drop from that straight down. So I can't bring the tree back, my fence back in because it's on an angle.
What kind of fence are you putting on?
Vinyl with the, the top 12 feet would be lattice.
Okay, I, I drove by this property and my guess is those trees have been there several decades, right?
The trees have been there 45 years because I planted them there.
I'm all in favor of you being able to do this, but I don't like the idea that they have to pay $286 a year.
Well, that was my.
Unless Mr. Thielen advises otherwise, I think you have a right to amend that. The logic, I believe, came from a previous lease agreement we did. I think we, we encountered this, I think, the first time on a property downtown, if I remember right, where there was an odd line and they wanted to do something. So we were trying to find a creative way to give somebody a right to do something on some land that was kind of in control. And I think the best option we came up with was the lease agreement. And knowing at the time, there had to be some considerations. We just didn't want to give it away. We based it on assessed value. So the number of square feet proportionally to the assessed value was the logic we did the very first time. And now that we've done that, they kind of set the precedent from here on out. But I believe you're free to amend it if you want to. Would that, anything to add to that, Mr. Thielen?
We, typically a city shouldn't just give away city property for no consideration at all. And that was the thinking behind this. And this was done using a formula that's been, as the mayor indicated, used in different other cases.
Well, I can agree that it's not a good idea just to give away city property. But what we're talking about here is two and a half feet along a sidewalk that essentially has been part of his backyard through the entire time.
So a dollar would mean you're not giving it away?
Well, I would say $286 for the first year.
Year after, the same price.
Well, I don't think you need to continue to pay $286 every year thereafter.
Well, the way it was, that's the only way I was going to put up my fence. So.
Do you want to make a motion to amend?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to modify the annual rent to be $286 for the first year. But, you know, when you start out, okay, we need payment. But to have $0 thereafter.
Any legal concerns, Mr. Thielen?
Again, as, as I mentioned, typically a city isn't supposed to give away its property for free. But that's in your discretion to do a motion to amend. If we, if the motion to amend passes, then we need to rewrite the lease a little bit and have Mr. Bima sign that and we can go forward.
The way, the modification doesn't give away free, it's $286. So if that fence is up there for 10 years, it's 28 bucks a year. If it's, that fence is up there for 100 years, it's $286.
I, I agree with you. But again, that was the only way I'm going to build the fence.
I, I understand. That's what the ordinance says.
And now.
So we have.
If you've read the contract, they can pull it back anytime they want.
So we have a motion to amend on the floor.
Pull it back and, you know, I don't want you or anybody else to be, to be obligated every year to pay for something that I think has minimal value to the city. So.
That's correct. I agree with you.
My, my object is that let's do this with a degree of rationality. Yeah, you got to pay something, but $286 the first year is enough.
So we have a motion to amend. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Ms. Klue.
What happens if this gentleman decides to sell his property? Because, I mean.
Mr. Thielen?
The way it's written, the, the new owner would assume the lease at the same terms. It would just continue.
Yeah, I don't know that I necessarily agree with that if we're going to do this. I, I'm okay with what Mr. Mumgarth's saying. Have asked this resident to pay the first year and change the price. But it seems like if we're going to then start carrying this over, I just see a really bad trend coming our way that it's great this first time, but then the second time and the third time and the fourth time, what starts to happen in 10, 20, 30 years? So I have some real concerns about the lease and making these modifications, knowing that homes get sold on an average of how many years apart?
Mr. Mumgarth?
Okay, then I'll modify my motion. I move that it be amended to have a rental payment of $286 for the first year and, and $0 annually thereafter. And make the lease subject to, subject to renewal upon the sale of the property. So with the new owner, we have to come back and ask his permission to keep the fence there.
Attorney? The practical issue with that is monitoring that because we won't know when that sale occurs. But council's aware of that. So was that a friendly amendment to the amendment? Mr. Glover? Who made the second, Mr. Glover? Were you okay with that? Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Sunday?
Could someone run, run by, how you got this two, two eighty-six number again?
Yeah, again, it was, it's a proportional based on the assessed value. So it's the assessed value divided by the square feet applied by how much is used.
As if you were purchasing that land?
Yeah.
So generally, I think the rule of thumb, I think a good rule of thumb is one percent of the value of a piece of property per month is what people would generally pay rent for, for a residential land, right? So why don't we just do that? One percent per month. And you can pay that on an annual basis. So whatever twelve percent of two eighty-six is, that's his annual rent. So that's a counter amendment proposal, I guess. It might be easier to keep track of and monitor that way.
Just so we don't get confused, and again, I'm gonna look to Mr. Thielen for some direction. I wanna somewhat honor Robert's rule, even though it's a big book and we don't know all the rules. The intent of it is to have an orderly meeting. So Mr. Thielen, would it be easier to have a, a motion to amend on a motion to amend? Or would it be easier to deal with the first motion to amend, have that up or down, and then deal with the second one if it comes along?
You could do a substitute motion and if, and you could incorporate everything that's been said before on the previous motion and add what your stipulation is. And if that's seconded, then it comes to a vote and that can be the motion to amend. I will point out that the, the yardstick that we've used is ten percent per year. And that's pretty close to one percent per month.
Okay. So I think we're still in council discussion on the original motion to amend. Any other discussion, Mr. Mungard?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just point out, one of my goals is to make it easier for you. Pay upfront and then you don't have to get filled, you don't have to, the city doesn't have to fill you. Nobody has to do anything in the future simply because this fence is two and a half feet closer.
I agree with you.
Mr. Ingberg?
Well, before anybody makes a substitute motion, since I'm not an attorney, I'll try not to complicate it. We're not selling the property, really. Why don't we just, if you, but if you don't want to give, give something away, why don't we just, just make it a dollar a year and be done with it? We're, we're not interested in making money. And, and as Councilman Mungard, you said, it's not of any real value to the city. Rather than have an initial payment, then it goes to zero. And then when the new owner comes, why don't we just make it a dollar a year?
I'll answer that, Attorney. I'll answer that. Anything that we do that has a recurring payment creates future problems. That somebody has to fill this man for a dollar. He has to send in a dollar. Finance department has to re, you know, not take that. I'm saying, no, get it upfront, get done with it, and not, not have the, the opportunity for screw-ups in the future.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Sunday?
Mr. Mungard just talked me into his position. I think I agree with that, so.
Any other discussion? Please vote on the motion to amend. And just so we're clear on what we're voting on, because it substitutes other discussions, I believe it's to keep the dollar amount for the first year, move to zero after that, but add a requirement that upon the transfer of the sale, they need to come back and renew the lease. Is that the intent? Okay, please vote.
Sunday? Mungard? Glover? Clue? Ingberg? Five A's, zero N's.
Did you ever come in front of government and have them lower the bill? Thank you, sir.
I think that was the motion to amend, now we need to.
Oh, that was, yes, that was the motion to amend. So I'm needing a lot of help tonight. So the motion is amended. Any other discussion on the original motion as amended? Please vote.
Sunday? Mungard? Glover? Clue? Ingberg? Five A's, zero N's.
Now the motion passes, thank you very much. Item F eight, Resolution Art twenty-one zero-two zero-three, a resolution to approve Jason A. Link as the corporate manager for Blazin' Wings Inc. Doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings number two-twelve for their Class I liquor license. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Art twenty-one zero-two zero-three? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Mungard. Any proponents or opponents? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Thank you. You don't need to come up unless you want to. And this, all right, any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday? Mungard? Glover? Clue? Ingberg? Five A's, zero N's.
Motion passes, thank you. Item F nine, Ordinance nineteen forty-two, An Ordinance to Amend Section two oh five two eighteen Fence Regulations, Article thirty-four Supplemental Site Development Regulations of Chapter two oh five Zoning Regulations. To provide regulations for residential trash enclosures, the applicant is Councilman Steve Sunday. It's a residential trash enclosure amendment. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance nineteen forty-two? Motion by Councilman Sunday? Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Glover. Council discussion, Mr. Sunday?
Okay, what's up on the screen is the property owner's fence that he, he built. It's approximately six feet high, I believe. This ordinance change, as, as was argued the last meeting, when, when our ordinance was writ and trash cans weren't any more than two and a half to three feet high. And so we had a three-foot limit on the fence height. Well, the practical, practical reality now, in our society today, our trash cans are much taller than that. And so a six-foot fence is, it makes sense, it's logical. I think we here in government are, not here just to impose limitations on people, but to try to help people that have needs. And this citizen is asking that we change our ordinance very slightly to allow for, what I think you can all agree, can we go back to that original photo? Very tasteful, it's, it's just a fence right along the front of his house. The limitation on the ordinance change is five feet extending from the house, no more than that, and no more than six feet tall. That is not distasteful at all, in my, in my view. And I think we should permit it so that citizens that want to hide their trash cans can do it. I think that makes our neighborhoods look better. Now, I've got some other photos from the same street, on the same side of the street. This is one neighbor, I'm not gonna tell you who, who it is and where they live, but that's one neighbor. I'm gonna stay there, please, go back. You know, we've got, we've got some tree stumps that have been cut and some old bricks that are stacked up in front. We'll go on to the next one. Weed's growing on the driveway, we've got stuff growing, I think there's a close-up three A. Stuff stacking the front there. That's not apparently offensive to anyone, but this fence is. So let's move on to the next one. We've got a trailer with a bunch of junk stacked in it and the trash cans in front of the garage. Again, this is on the same street, on the same side of the street as the, this person that's asking for this ordinance change. Here, on the same street, we have an old wooden box that's been constructed out front. For what purpose, I'm not sure, but it's rotting at the bottom. And that doesn't violate our code either, apparently. Move on, please. Now, we have another neighbor who's storing some lumber out front. Moving on to the next one. Okay, and then this is a completely different neighborhood, but with this, this person who lives here's got a bunch of junk stored in the backyard. And the next photos will show the rest of the house, junk in the front. You can't see, but that's rotting siding there, go to the front, please. More junk, there's a tire in the back. Okay, look at all the stuff in the front there. I wish that we could zoom in on that. It's not just trash cans, but the junk amongst the trash cans. That's here in our community right now. These photos are all taken on a Sunday. Okay, go on to the next one, please. That was all of them? Okay, this is another home in Papillion. Put you close up on that one, on the side of the house. Badly in need of paint repair, the wood is rotting on the trim. Zoom in on that front window screen. It's ripped and has not been repaired. And I've got more photos, let's just go through them more quickly because I don't want to waste anybody's time. Let's go to the next set of photos. We have landlords here in our community with properties like this one. Not just the roof falling apart, but gone. The yard's not kept. You've got gutters falling off. Again, on another, this is the same house, gutters falling off in the front. Gutter falling off on the shed. Shingles not on. So you've got properties like this one, what I call slumlords throughout our community. There's another one. Weed's growing on the side of the house and in the front yard. And we're putting up with all of these things. And I know that we're gonna meet opposition from at least one council member here tonight that's gonna say that if we make an exception and change this ordinance, it's somehow going to create a slippery slope that's gonna ruin our neighborhoods and ruin the valuations of our neighbors' homes. But what have we done in the last ten, twenty, thirty years to solve these problems in our community? Because those are the real problems. Not this gentleman here who just wants to cover up his trash cans in a tasteful manner. And I would urge everybody to reconsider your position on this. And please just pass this because this is right. This is the right thing to do. It's working in tandem with a citizen to solve a problem. We are not just here to impose our will on people. We are a government of the people and for the people and by the people. Let's act like it. Please vote for this, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Mr. Mungard?
Well, I'm gonna vote against it. And I'm gonna present another point of view there. Although it certainly is commendable of this person to try to hide his trash cans. I'm all in favor of that. And if Mr. Sunday's point is that we have derelict houses around or people who don't take care of their property, I'll agree, of course we do. What does that mean to this guy? Nothing, because he is a person who is asked to take care of his property. Our for, front yard fence ordinance, I think, serves a purpose. It says you cannot put these kinds of barriers out in your front yard. That the front yard is different than the side or the back. That you put these things out in the front yard and that's the place where everybody can see. Okay, those pictures that you showed, everybody can see it. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna approve of any of them. And that's one of the purposes of the front yard fence ordinance, is that when we're talking about that area that impacts the neighborhood, people next door, people who drive by, we control them. Mentally control them. I just simply say, no, you can't put fences out there. Now, I find it significant that this came to our attention by a complaint by somebody in the neighborhood. Somebody who apparently shares my view that, well, overall, that's a bad thing to do is to build a permanent type fence in the front yard. That's different than weeds, that's different than trash, that's different from these things that can be cleaned up. That's a permanent structure. Somebody in that neighborhood says, "Oh, no, no, that's, that's not what we do here." And they called it a complaint. That person apparently sees that there is a purpose in the ordinance that says you don't put a fence in front of you. And to double that up, there's really no need to do this. We saw in the last meeting pictures of people who have done it by putting the garbage cans on the side of the house and putting a fence in front of them that goes to the side that applies all the ordinance. Now, you can drive around town and you'll see that all over the place, very common. So the commendable purpose of hiding the garbage cans, our ordinance always already permits it. The only thing difference here is this, this proponent wants his garbage cans ten, fifteen feet further out toward the street. When we, I asked him about why, why he wanted to do this, his only answer was, "Well, it was personal preference." Well, okay, you know, I'm not gonna minimize personal preference, but when we're talking about community interest and there are other ways to achieve the same goal of hiding garbage cans, I see no need or purpose in amending our ordinance, opening doors, doing things like that. Yes, I'll talk slippery slope. So for those reasons, I'm going to vote against this.
Mr. Sunday?
I disagree. The reason given was that the, the nature of the slope on that side of his house caused him to put it up slightly in front of the house at less than five feet. It's not fifteen feet. The ordinance change proposed is no more than five feet. So fifteen feet is just untrue. So let's at least stick to the facts here when we make our arguments. It's not fifteen feet, it's five at most. That's the proposed change. So I, I would like that to be clear for everybody that's voting here. We're not talking about putting a structure fifteen feet out into somebody's driveway. We're talking about something very tasteful like we just saw in the photograph. That's what we're talking about. We just made an exception for Ms. Simmons and her tat, tattoo art gallery. We just made an exception for Mr. Bema and his fence. I see no reason that we shouldn't do that for this applicant either. Thank you.
Mr. Mungard?
Okay, I want to clarify. I don't, I didn't mean to say that the fence comes out fifteen feet. I think I was saying that the garbage cans, if they're in, if they're in the front of the house, they are ten to fifteen feet closer to the street than they would be if they're on the side of the house. That's all that this would accomplish for this person is to move his, his hidden garbage cans. Instead of doing it the way that the ordinance permits, it would move his hidden garbage cans ten to fifteen feet closer to the street. That's what I meant to say. And I certainly did not paint believe any impression that I talk about fencing without fifteen feet.
Any other council discussion? I'm gonna be consistent on every item because of the five we've got. Mr. Sunday, I'll look to you for direction if we take a vote or if we table?
I think because I know that Mr. Mungard's going to vote against this, and I'm pretty sure that the mayor won't weigh in because I don't vote. If there are four other votes, I think we will make a motion here to table to the next meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion to table the next meeting, is there a second? Second by Mr. Mungard. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday? Mungard? Glover? Clue? Ingberg? Five A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Scouts hanging around for the whole meeting. There was a subtle comment about me not weighing in on, on tie votes. If you're really interested in city government and philosophy, I can explain that one to you. I think that's all the regular agenda items, no committees have met. Any comments from the floor? What's that? Yeah. Want to come up and introduce yourself? Let us know what troop you're with and maybe what you're working on? And you got to tell us your name, tell us your name, the troop, and what you're working on.
My name is Dominic and I'm part of four sixty-three. And what I'm working on is my communications merit badge.
Welcome. Did you learn anything?
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the floor? Seen done, any council comments? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. The wastewater agency continues to meet.
Generally, we have one meeting a month, we've actually had two this month. Um, as development is picking up, uh, the agencies get more involved, because development's starting to occur around the ridgeline. One of the things it's doing, though, you know, with any, any policy that's developed brand-new, it's, it's based on theory, and now that development's really happening, it's testing the intent of the rules. And so we're, uh, the city and the agency are working and, uh, with the developers to make sure that that goes smoothly. So there's periodic modifications made to the rules, or we make assumptions on what intent means and issue building permits, and we'll figure, figure them out. But anyway, the agency's getting very active as development's getting to the ridgeline. MAPPA held their annual meeting, several of us went. I don't think there was any real major item that came out of that, um, for an update, other than MAPPA doesn't have a new director, and he was introduced. The, the Area Historical Society hosted a chamber coffee and contacts. It's nice to see the historical society getting involved with the business community and building that relationship, and getting some of the business community down in, uh, downtown. Congressman Fortenberry with the redistricting, Papillion is now in his district. He did reach out to Mayor Kindig and myself, and, uh, he came up, and we had a meeting last week. He just wanted to start understanding the community a little bit, making sure he had, uh, contacts and what was important to us. What I communicated to him from a federal level that was important to us, besides just the normal cooperation on road funding, um, when the feds are involved, was really the levy and, uh, the one-hundred-and-ninety-second and I eighty interchange. Any federal money that helps with stormwater management, realizing everything is draining into Papio, into downtown Papillion. Uh, we gotta stay on top of the, that, so basically asking to support the N R D, um, because we got a great relationship with them. And then that, um, at the point that we need any federal assistance on the one-hundred-and-ninety-second and I eighty interchange, that he's there to support that. So I was appreciative of him coming down. The rec department put on a five K and a ten K this weekend, had really good attendance from that. And then we had a ribbon cutting today. Mr. Mungard was there for the mansions at Granite Falls, which is a project at one-hundred-and-eighth and Highway three seventy. A little bit of a unique project, I know we're having a lot of discussion about multifamily. But it's built in a model where, uh, Mr. Mungard, correct me if I'm wrong, there are ten units to a building, and they're basically built as townhouses, so everybody has an outside access. It's not like a traditional apartment complex, and, uh, some pretty high quality, so, uh, it was nice to get, uh, a tour there. And then a reminder, Monday night, six o'clock? Yeah, Monday night at six o'clock is the dedication for the scout cabin. It's actually about a thirty-minute ceremony, we've got a number of people talking, uh, from different perspectives about the importance of the, the cabin, and a unique aspect of it, one of the major donors, um, is gonna be there, and she actually is a, uh, suicide advocate, her husband had committed suicide, and it's a Papillion resident, and, um, she, they had a lot of ties to scouts, and she was just trying to figure out how to make a difference in the community with the funds that she received, um, from the estate, and, uh, she realized the importance of scouts in, in, uh, in their family, and she also wanted to give back to Papillion, so she donated almost fifteen thousand dollars to the scout cabin renovation. So she'll talk a little bit about that, and a little bit of her story and suicide advocacy as well. So it should be a pretty good thing, come out, uh, City Park, six o'clock, Monday night. I think that's everything, any other council, have any other items?
Mr. Sunday?
Quiet about this, uh, our, what I view as our very political attorney general, recently directed the FBI to get with local law enforcement to try to stifle parents from speaking out at, uh, school board meetings, and to, to try to get local law enforcement to cooperate with the FBI to find domestic terrorists amongst our parents who have the audacity to exercise their First Amendment rights at school board meetings. So I think that we should think long and hard as a community as to whether we want our law enforcement agencies here in, in our county and in our city to be cooperating with a, with a witch hunt like that that's obviously intended to stifle free speech at school board meetings for the purpose of pushing through their critical race theory, which in and of itself is a racist ideology. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mungard?
Oh, I don't wanna start some sort of political debate here, but I'm gonna say, um, I disagree with Mr. Sunday's characterization of the situation. There was a very lengthy and very well-written article in World Apparel today. I encourage anybody who's interested, uh, to read that article and, uh, find additional information on what the federal proposal looks.
Thank you, any other council comments? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Klue, please vote.
Sunday? Mungard? Glover? Klue? Ingberg? Five A's, zero N's.
We are adjourned, thank you.